Electrally signed, then nothing's changed.
I just didn't have the number.
Yeah, you don't need, just anyone, any code will work, and I'll get it, I can email.
Nice to know people in high places, huh?
Ew, thank you. I'll take care of it. They can verify with the phone everything that we have, and then they can literally go online, submit, and then it's all set, so it's like.
Big fan of automation.
Great.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, thank you. Welcome to the Wednesday, March 5th, 2025 Pembroke Select Board Meeting. Please join us in signing the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I keep hitting it. Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through a live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 9 and YouTube channel at Pembroke Meetings LS, and is being recorded for broadcast at future dates. Comments made in open session will be recorded. Just a quick announcement before we begin. I wanted to send our love and condolences to the family and friends of Joel Sugarman. I don't know if everybody is aware that he passed away last week. He previously served on our school committee, and most recently, he had helped to put together the Friends of the Community Center group, where I believe he served as president. He was a wonderful man. His services are going to be Saturday at the Sullivan Funeral Home in Hanover. Visitation will be 1:00 to 3:00, and then they are going to have a reception at the Indian Pond Country Club in Kingston from 4:00 to 7:00 for anyone who would like to attend. Thank you. Our first board action item is discussion and vote on, oh, yep, I'm sorry, on Town's Right of First Refusal. Notice of Intent to Sell, 58 West Elm Street, parcel ID number B10-3, containing approximately 12.1521 acres. Is there anyone here to speak about this?
Mr. Baker, would you like to come up?
Thank you very much.
Hello again.
Good evening.
Welcome. Do you want to tell us a little about your property?
The property is a 12-acre-plus farm that's next to the Pembroke Golf Course on 58 West Elm Street. Carl Peterson and Dot Peterson owned the property for many, many years and ran the farm there. And what happened is Carl died, oh, about three years ago, four years ago, and Dot passed away about a year, a little bit more than a year ago. So I am the trustee of their trust. I am their attorney, so I guess I know more than anybody at this point. And we have priced the property up for sale. We did get a bidder for that. That was the Bristol Brothers, the ones who own the golf course, and they have it in their Development Corporation. And we entered into a purchase and sale agreement, and because it was a 61A, obviously, 61A, Section 14 requires that we notify the board of that and grant the statute, it's a grant, but for the opportunity to have a right of first refusal on the circumstances there. So I think everything had been sent in to you in January, I think it was January 21st, that then were delivered, and you have 120 days to make a decision, and so we're certainly well within that.
Thank you. Does anybody on the board have any questions or comments?
I have a question first, I guess to Sabrina, is all the documentation before us not taken?
Yes, it is, including the rollback estimates from the assessor's office, which will be part of your deliberative material.
And the next question is for the town manager. Do we have $775,000 kicking around?
We do not without a dead exclusion.
Thank you. Anybody else?
So I'd just say that the town of Pembroke, from time to time, will exercise their right to purchase a property when it's to the benefit of the town, to the public, and it makes sense. This property, I think, makes more sense being in private hands, especially since it's adjoining the large parcel at the golf course, who, as we know, have a development there that's been lagging in the construction phase of it, and this may help kickstart them. They might be able to utilize this property as a private developer more than the town could use it, for any town or municipal purposes.
Thank you, Dan. If not, would I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to waive the Town's Right of First Refusal with respect to the land located 58 West Elm Street, parcel B10-3, containing approximately 12.1521 acres in accordance with Mass General Law, Section 61A, Section 14, and based on the proposed purchase and sale.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's too early for our public hearing, so why don't we move on to some board action items? I don't know if we want to start the warrant items yet, so. Why don't we move on to the discussion and vote to sign on to the OCPC MMA Letter to Legislators to Make COVID Hybrid/Remote Meetings Permanent, Enacted COVID Provisions to Extend, expire March 31st, 2025. So you do have a letter in here, or some information in here on that. I'm sure you all received. Well, this one was printed out today, but you received other information before. Did anybody have any discussion about this before we move on?
My first thought is that I would love every COVID position to sunset, and it wouldn't break my heart for this to sunset either, but I don't have a strong opinion about it, so if other members of this board want to petition the state to keep it, and of course, every other city and town has influence as well, it wouldn't break my heart for this to sunset.
I don't even think it should be a COVID issue anymore at this point, isn't it just offering the ability for people to participate in meetings when?
Yeah, I didn't mean to, well, it gives it a connotation of it's a lingering COVID effect, but the need for it was during the time of the shutdowns. And so I guess the reason I don't fully support this, although I'm not quite agnostic on it, but I don't fully support it, is that I think being in person, you know, conducting your meetings in person, especially towns that have representative town meetings that do it online, I would rather see them, even though I'm not a part of those towns, I'd rather see municipal government being conducted in a public place. That's, it's not a strong feeling, but it is a feeling that I have toward that.
And I would agree with that, but I think the allowances need to be made on a case-by-case for meetings and specific.
Yep, so there's still, there's still law on the books, and it was pre-COVID, that if a member couldn't attend, they can call in remotely.
Right.
That's still the same, that's still on the books.
Yes.
So I don't think, I don't think the sunsetting would hurt a selectmen or a city council meeting, but I just wonder if it could be abused in a town meeting setting.
I think I'm of a similar mind to you, Dan, on this. I don't have any animus against it. I definitely see the value in having that flexibility. I actually was not aware that there was a previous provision that allowed for that. In any case, even before the COVID provisions, it sounded like really the COVID ones really just kind of expanded it significantly for like massive remote capabilities.
And what it did was it lifted the physical requirement, so a meeting could be 100% remote, whereas it could never be before, to Dan's point. Any member anywhere could travel, call in, or be ill, call in. You could participate remotely, vote, and have your voice heard as a board member, but people at home had to watch on television. By keeping or expanding on remote possibility, you allow members of the public and boards to not actually meet in public. They would be meeting on a platform that gives public access, and as we saw during COVID, it is, it takes several staff members in order to orchestrate that. So not a lot of boards are using it, but we do have two that do occasionally use the hybrid piece, where they will allow their board and the public to do either/or, and then a quorum isn't required in the room. So the difference is going back to quorum in the room and the board members being able to participate remotely, or supporting the extension, which would allow public, board members, and everyone to participate remotely without a quorum in the room.
So.
It's desired, sorry.
That's all right. So a couple of things I think about is, I remember on the Master Plan Collaboration Committee, which I know is a mouthful whenever I say it, but the Master Plan Collaboration Committee, we had a, we had a number of, I think we had a couple of events, at least one of them was conducted at a hybrid format, and I thought that that did add some value. So we did have an in-person capability, we did our kind of presentations, and people went to the library, people could attend and talk with us, et cetera, and then we also had PAC TV there, and they made it so folks could connect remotely and contribute some thoughts remotely as well, and I thought that that added some pretty good value. So I do, I do like the ability to do kind of that hybrid, that flexibility is nice, I think that that adds some value. A couple of things, a couple of issues I did take with the way the messaging in this request was put forth was to, you know, hey, here's a template, it's just a template, of course, and there was a lot of language around supporting specific bills and legislation, and that I have a little bit of a problem with.
Absolutely, and Ms. Marino found MAPC's version, which does not do that, which is the draft that's brand new and on top of your materials, and is what we printed, so the board would be free to consider supporting the continuation of the remote participation piece without supporting any legislation you have not yet read.
Is that the same thing that we have here, the draft, that's the same exact one? And I already liked that a lot better, because the template and certainly the reference to the Municipal Empowerment Act, which I actually don't find very empowering municipally speaking, that specifically has the hybrid remote packaged in. I thought that that was kind of the worst of the proposed legislation, I know that that's from the Healy administration, and that's one that has that component as part of it, but there's a whole lot of other stuff in there as well that I'm not a fan of, so I definitely don't like the idea of associating with that package, me speaking personally. And then the two bills, the House bill and the Senate bill, I think it was HD 2863 and SD 1850?
My memory. Very good.
Yeah. Between those two, the Senate bill I found more egregious than the House bill at least, because it's so strict and gets into the technicals so much, and says this is how it should be done, this way, and blah, 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 and offers a lot less flexibility for towns, even though it focuses just on that kind of hybrid remote capability piece, it was a lot more restrictive and overly directing compared to the House piece. So between all of those three, I thought the House was more flexible and better for municipalities, but even from that in general, I think I prefer this even kind of lighter letter over here that doesn't advocate for a specific bill. So those are just my thoughts on it.
Anybody else have any further discussion?
I just have a couple of comments.
Please.
I support remote meetings, I think it's a valuable tool, I just want the board to be aware that there is a cost to remote meetings, there is a licensing cost for the software, and there is a staff time cost for setting up those meetings, those meetings just don't happen in a vacuum, you have to make sure that you set those up, and make sure that you, you know, take in the folks that are going to be attending those meetings and allow them access, and then there's management during the meeting of folks in and out, and there is a risk that someone could Zoom bomb you. We've been very successful in Pembroke in preventing that, but other communities had some very, very egregious.
School department?
And our school department, too, had some real bad Zoom bombs, so just want full picture out there before we vote.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, just kind of, the only thing I agree with, because I said, we were fighting for this when COVID was happening, to make sure we could get back in person as soon as possible, because I like the interaction between us and the audience itself, and there's a real big fight because of the online presence of Zoom. I don't mind Zoom happening if it's an emergency, pretty much, or say someone does want to, you know, be here to be part of the meeting here instead of calling in, they actually have a face with whomever and try to figure it out. I understand the cost that Bill's saying, but for me, it would be no real thought on it, but in emergency situations, say it's a huge snowstorm, we have to get something because of timeframes, it's good to at least have it in the background, but it's got to be, I guess, written better than what everyone else has been saying, so that makes sense.
Anything else, Rich, you have anything?
No, I'm just stating that I'm inclined not to extend anything really COVID-related, frankly.
Well, do we have a motion?
Motion to take no action.
Second.
Motion to support, support signing on to the letter to make the COVID hybrid remote meetings permanent.
They're going to take Dan's motion.
Oh, sorry, perhaps, all right, all in favor then?
I will draw my motion if the chair wants to make a motion first, that's a difference.
You sure?
Yeah, I'm going to vote no on yours, though.
Okay. Well, let's do it then. So you've withdrawn.
So I will draw my motion and second the chair's motion.
You're seconding my motion. Okay, all in favor?
By roll call?
By roll call, John?
No.
Dan?
No.
I'm, yes, obviously, Steve?
No.
Rich?
No.
Okay, then. Do we need to make another motion?
Nope, you are done.
All right, then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carrying on, vote to accept the minutes of February 19th, 2025.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Who seconded that?
What?
I did.
Yes, he did. Don't do that to me.
All right, sorry.
That's okay. A little early for a 7:30 hearing. Do we have any liaison updates today? Anybody would like to share?
Oh, yeah, actually, I did. Today, the Pembroke Chamber, with the Pembroke Chamber, we have an event today, businesses throughout the South Shore over here, it was a great event happening in Tolsons, sponsored by Tiny and Sons with Peter Brown, and it was a wonderful event, and showcased several businesses that were there for Pembroke. So anyone who has a business within town, as we always go around to businesses around town to make sure, please sign up, it's $125 a year, and it's to accentuate our businesses, to let people know that we're Pembroke and we're here, love to have.
Is this like a networking event?
Yes. That was awesome.
Thank you, John, anybody else have any liaison updates? Any old business? I have one thing for old business, presentations for the old Council on Aging building. We had the library, what's the plan for having the other presentations?
Whenever you want them.
So do we want to maybe put out to those groups that we would like to have them by such and such a date just to get them completed? What do we think for a timeframe?
I think one of the groups is in very, already is presented to me, and the other group probably is a real short timing, so I'm guessing, I don't know, I'll have to ask, but I will reach out to them tomorrow. No, I won't, I won't be here tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll reach out to them on Monday.
And do we want to say like sometime, maybe the end of April?
Oh, I would do it before then.
Before then?
Yep.
Not our next March meeting?
I would do the first meeting in April.
First meeting in April, that works for me.
Do we know how many other groups there are that are interested?
I know of two.
Two total, including the library, I'm aware of the library.
No, no, three total, including the library.
Okay.
There were four, but one was two, so.
Okay. Can we say what they are and if we don't want?
Yeah, one is an adult daycare program, the other is a youth services program.
Okay. And you will reach out to both those groups then?
Yep.
Thank you. Any other old business?
I have a couple town manager update that aren't budget-related.
Sounds good.
One thing I do want to ask the board to support, and I will be asking our legislative delegation to support, is that the Governor's Office has proposed increase in Chapter 90. If the bill passes the House and Senate, Pembroke's allocation will go from 555,482 to 868,408, so that's a $313,000 increase in our Chapter 90. Our road race can certainly use those funds, so I'm asking the board to support, they don't have to take a formal vote, but I will be obviously addressing our legislative delegation and writing a letter of support for it, I think it's a great program for us, it basically gives us money for a road race, so that's the first item. Second items are, I want to congratulate the Pembroke High School Winter Sports Programs. Four of our programs, five of our programs made the MIAA championships, the tournaments. Those were the indoor track, which won their division, we've already talked about that. The boys hockey program, which, man, they were a pretty low seed, and they were playing a higher seed the other day, and it went to two overtimes, and unfortunately, they lost, but they had a really good season, so I want to congratulate them. Similar story for the girls hockey program, they went down to Martha's Vineyard and won the first round game, unfortunately, they lost the second round game. Boys basketball, got into the tournament and was defeated, but had a great game, so I want to congratulate them. And finally, girls basketball, they're actually playing right now in Worcester, they've won their first round game, actually, this is the third round, so let's, you know, I'm going to cheer them on from the podium here and hope that they can beat a higher seed in the South High School in Worcester, you know, go girls, you know, get up there and kick their butt, so that's all I have this evening, so other than the budgets, we'll get into after.
Question on that increase in Chapter 90, is there any new string attached to that? It's clean.
It's the same Chapter 90 program, she only increased the budget question.
Okay.
Marino, there's four routine articles, can I take those?
Might as well start working on those.
Okay. If you want, just to keep it quick and moving, the board that would be routine and simple would be the Community Preservation Fund allocations. They're identical to last year, and it is routine, when we receive the money, we have to put it into the funds, so it's routinely allocated every year, this is not the CPC projects.
Correct.
So.
It's a statutory requirement to allocate those funds, and this is the allocation, so.
This is Article 7.
Article 7, ma'am.
How much do we have in that account?
There's variable funds.
Yeah, it's driven into the four categories, so we, I can get that for you.
We're allocating it from the.
From the receipts.
From the receipts, from the.
Three percent?
One.
One percent?
One.
And then it's matched.
Is it still matched?
It's matched.
It has been, there's some question on whether it's going to continue to be matched as we move forward, but up till now, it has been, yeah, for us.
Has the law always said that the state may match, as opposed to which shall match? It's like, well, how is that changing?
No, they always have matched, we just aren't sure when they could do that.
So there is some question about whether they're going to continue to match, but for us, we still get the match, so.
Interesting.
And clearly, your recommendation is favorable action.
Yes.
I would move favorable action on Article 7.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next one is your revolving fund limits.
Is there any discussion on Article 8?
So just one note for me, we did increase the Recreation Revolving Fund because the community center is taking in funds, and we want to be able to reduce our costs from appropriation and pay for it with funds that we're receiving within the revolving fund, so that is now requested to be at $150,000.
What was it before?
125, which we had increased last year.
Yep. Are there any changes in any of the others?
No, the rest are the same.
Any other discussion, questions? Motions?
I would move favorable action on Article 8.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Then you have the annual acceptance of town reports, a routine article in which you take the book that we've already printed and hold it up at town meeting.
It's not numbered.
Correct, it's at the very end.
Right. Yeah, second to last page. I suppose you have anything to comment here?
I don't have anything to comment on this, I won't on the next one either.
Of course, do I have a motion?
I would move to accept Article To Be Determined, Accept Town Reports.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then the last one is the annual town election, and that's not the last one, you'll take it the others after, your 7:30.
No, sorry, one today. Any discussion on this? Any discussion on this, annual town elections? Do I have a motion?
I would move Article to be determined, annual town election.
Second.
Favorable.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll slip the other ones after.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, all we have is our public hearing at 7:30. Would we have the necessary people present? In four minutes.
I'm going to go chase that.
What is that?
Got it.
Would we have anyone here for Pembroke Wine and Spirits?
Yeah, we're here.
We're okay with just starting this four minutes early?
Yeah, it's a public hearing, we need to start.
I can do intros.
Can you give me some background? Yeah, thank you.
Well, not this, but I can do intros for the budget presentation on staff.
All right.
I have some things there that, so we are going.
Four minutes, fellas, sorry.
We are going to have folks with us this evening for budget presentations as they are here. Most of them are here now, one other person is coming, but I want to take a couple of minutes and thank all of them and tell you something about each one of them, because I think that's important. In Pembroke, we are pretty lean when it comes to staffing. We have positions in Pembroke that aren't, that are basically required activities that we have to do that other towns actually have staff members for that we don't. These folks out here and several others fill those voids for us. Town manager's office fills a lot of those voids, but I'm just going to introduce the folks and tell you a little bit about them up till 7:30. So with us this evening are Jean Gelotti, the chief assessor, Kathleen McCarthy, the treasurer collector, Joe DiUdi will be here, he's the public works director, Andy McHetric is the town clerk, and of course, Sabrina. So I'll talk briefly about each of them. Jean is currently overseeing the installation of a major software project. It's a major upgrade, which includes a new virtual server and the installation of a new assessing software upgrade. It hasn't gone as we had hoped, but she has done a remarkable job, and as of today, we think it's 100% complete. It also includes moving the existing mapping software to the new server. She has worked with consultants and made that happen. You know, she is still relatively new in the position, and I am incredibly pleased at her performance, so. Kathleen McCarthy, treasurer collector, this was kind of funny, because as I talked to colleagues about this, I say, hey, our treasurer collector manages our pawn treatment program, and they said, what? You know, nobody thinks about that. They think I'm kidding them, and I'm not. Kathleen does manage our pawn treatment program. She also, she coordinates with the consultant that does the treatment, make sure that it is scheduled, make sure that the proper paperwork is filed. The treasurer collector's office also plays a major part in the town's human resources. As you know, we don't have a separate human resources department. She also serves as a member of the finance committee for the Mayflower Municipal Health Group. Joe DiUdi, Joe took over as the public works director immediately after retirement of the director and the assistant director. So he had me and he had them to help him as he was transitioning. He has done a remarkable job. He also, he serves as a member of the executive board for the Plumton County Public Works Association. He also has assisted me as the point person for the violatic software program, which has been an incredible tool to the town, saving the town money. And he managed the first year of our hot-in-place pavement management program, which also saves the town a significant amount of money and will as we move into the future. Andy McHetric, town clerk, Andy took over when Peg announced her retirement with a very short notice. Andy has done a remarkable job. She was immediately thrown into a presidential election, which she had to manage, and on top of that, she had to manage moving all of our precincts from their current locations to the community center. She conducted that election with huge success, including the state audit, which, that's a random audit, we just happened to be picked this year, Andy did a remarkable job with that, so. And then I want to briefly, because the town manager's budget is on tonight, talk about Sabrina. She's a major player in our web and social media presence. She's also a key member of, and manager of our opioid committee. She assists me as a member of the town's contractor prequalification process, and she fills in the gaps for human resources and our information technology programs. Incredible resource to the town. I don't think people recognize how much she and my executive assistant, Angela Sestito, do. As I said, we are incredibly lean. Several department heads fill the voids that many of our neighboring communities have dedicated staff for, so I just want to publicly thank everyone. Joey, you missed it, but watch it on TV, because I talked very highly of you, so. And I, no, 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 you're not late, we were just trying to fill the gap. Okay, it's 7:30, we're ready to roll.
Perfect. Nice timing, thank you.
Gentlemen, would you like to approach? Please come on up. All right, Ms. Maria, are you going to read it into the record?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have a public hearing at 7:30. It's an application for transfer of all alcohol package store license number 00023-PK-0960 at 125 Church Street from Portobello Beverage Inc. to Pembroke Wine and Spirits, Inc. Sharrag Patel, manager. Did I say that right? Hi, welcome, thank you.
Hi, thanks for having us. My name's Jackson Christian, I'm an attorney at Democus Law Offices in Lynn, and I'm here representing the applicant, which is Pembroke Wine and Spirits, Inc. Also here is Hitesh Patel, who is the president and the only owner of the corporation, and Sharrag, Sharrag, who is going to be the manager of record at the place. Michael Reardon is also here from Reardon Consulting, who they have hired to advise them on this transaction. So Hitesh, he formed Pembroke Wine and Spirits, the purchase, as you said, all of the assets and the alcohol license from Portobello Beverage, Inc., which is doing business as Wine and Spirits Depot at 125 Church Street. So they're going to continue on the same thing, a liquor store, it's all the same employees except for they're changing the manager, same hours, same products and everything. Sharrag is going to be the manager of record, and he currently works as a clerk at a liquor store in Cohasset, and he's worked as a clerk in Massachusetts since 2020 at various stores. He's tip certified, they've never had any issues anywhere else that he's worked, no violations or anything like that. They're also going to be using scanners at the location, and they're going to be getting financing from Mechanics Cooperative Bank for this. So overall, we're seeking three things from the board. The first is going to be approval of the transfer of the license to the applicant. The second is going to be approval of Sharrag as the manager of record at the store, and the third is just the approval of the pledge of the license and the inventory to Mechanics Cooperative Bank. And at this point, if you guys have any questions, we're happy to take those.
Do we have any questions, anybody?
I had a question, I just, for the record, we have information in our packet, is all the information, all the pertinent information here, Sabrina?
Yes, it is, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion then? We have two second, two separate motions here.
I will make a motion to approve the application for transfer of pet store all alcohol license number 00023-PK-0960 from Portobello Beverage Incorporated to Pembroke Wine and Spirits Incorporated to be exercised at 125 Church Street, Pembroke, Mass., consisting of approximately 3,767 square feet, one main entrance, exit in front, building, loading dock, and exit is where you are.
Second.
All in favor?
Point of order.
Sorry.
Questions, since this is a public hearing, as chair, could you just ask the public if there's anyone here to speak in favor or opposition?
Thank you.
Before we vote?
Is there anyone here to speak in favor or opposition?
Anyone?
No.
No.
Thank you.
A couple of people back indicated that they are in favor.
Well, thank you. All right, we had a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
I'm not sure if somebody seconded it, thank you.
I'll second it again.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Welcome to Pembroke.
Wait, we have a second motion?
Nope, almost.
Yep. Rich, do you want to just make the second one?
Sure, I'll move to approve the pledge of license number 00023-PK-0960 held by Wine and Spirits Incorporated, doing business as Wine and Spirits Depot to Mechanics Cooperative Bank.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for your time.
Welcome.
I'll confirm tomorrow by email.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Nice seeing you too. Take care, guys.
We love you so much in Pembroke, we'll bring it to the community center.
Come on, how much can we get?
Why did I just have that conversation with somebody today where they were going to have something there and they couldn't because they wanted to have a liquor license?
It's coming, it's coming.
I know, I know, unfortunately, a little later, but, all right, do we want to, why don't we return to the warrant items? Yes, just to make sure that's what we were. Yep, let's return to the warrant items. Finally.
Do you want me to present them, or would you like to just take it on? Jump right in.
Present away, Sabrina.
Thank you, ma'am. Your third option up this evening is sponsored by the Select Board. It is a medical marijuana overlay district zoning bylaw amendment that has been scheduled for a public hearing with the planning board on March 24th at 7:00 PM or thereabouts. There's also a public safety building presentation that night. I'm not sure when, one is 7:00, one is 7:30. But this particular article is designed to be three parts and to allow the town of Pembroke to vote at town meeting on whether or not they are interested in amending the overlay zone to allow allowable retail sales of marijuana, not restricted to medical. It would allow for a local excise tax option, which would allow the town to set a tax up to 3% on all sales at a retail marijuana permitted business. And it would also allow us to clean up part of a three-part general bylaw that here clarifies what is permitted marijuana. So it would go from, you would be allowed to have marijuana couriers, retail marijuana, and that courier would be within the confines of the town of Pembroke, which means transportation. But it would also mean that it would be local and it would be taxed. So this board, at this point in time, is seeking to recommend at town meeting that the overlay be amended, so there's only one spot in town it can go, that a tax be levied against the sale in up to 3%, and that the town allow this retail sale and retail delivery in the town of Pembroke, which are the only uses that are taxable. If you wanted to, for example, have cultivators and wholesalers and a growing field, you could permit all different types of marijuana production opportunities, but the facets that can be taxed are the retail sales in a storefront in this overlay district, or transportation from the retail facility to another home in Pembroke.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have at it.
And to be clear, this overlay district is in the industrial park area.
Yes, ma'am.
Over off Oak Street.
Yes, ma'am. The change to the bylaw does not change the overlay, it simply changed what it can be put in there, what use could also be added. The underlying uses still exist in the adult entertainment district.
Correct.
Does that percentage rate the maximum that we charge?
Yes, yes.
By state law?
Three.
Do we know what the other towns charge?
I think everybody's charging three.
Is it all three? Everybody three?
Most are 3%, some of the earlier towns are slightly smaller, but the huge majority are 3%.
I mean, why would you not, but I can't.
I think the early guys were cautious. I think they wanted to go in slowly.
Right.
I'm just wondering. But this was something this board had discussed bringing to the public for a vote, and this would be the vehicle to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I just think the whole atmosphere surrounding this topic has changed from the last time that this was voted down, and it's honestly, I think it's just possible revenue, and I don't really see any reason to prevent such, to ban it. I don't see any reason for a ban on such a thing. Did you have something?
Yeah, I mean, I agree entirely. It's another possible revenue stream. I mean, not even, what, 1,000 feet down from Pembroke, you can go to a competitor, so it's a moot point.
And over Marshville.
Right, on either direction.
Hanson, excuse me.
Halifax, too.
Halifax, sorry.
Yeah, so it's kind of a moot point whether you prohibit it here or not, because anyone can go anywhere to get it, so it seems a little bit silly to prohibit it further, descending that revenue somewhere else. And then a couple other things I'd say is, it's legitimate business, it's been legalized. I personally do not partake, really, in my view is that whether you partake or not, it should be kind of irrelevant. If you don't like it, don't do it. And as long as it's between consenting adults, then you should be allowed to do it for something like that, and it's legalized at the state level.
Which will become relevant later when you get to the next one.
And then, yeah, that's kind of the long and short of it, really. I mean, and the other side of it, I suppose, is that we are really trying to show that Pembroke is a lot more business friendly, a lot more commercial friendly, not to say that this is going to solve our commercial woes, but if we're going to start moving in that direction, I think we should start sending the message that we are a commercially friendly place, and I think that that goes a long way in doing that. Whereas if we have this kind of, maybe it's not a scarlet letter that it prohibits it here so much, but it does send a signal that it's a, it's a place that's really like, oh, you know, no, we're really sensitive about X, Y, and Z. I can understand why folks, maybe as individuals, are sensitive about it, but again, it's legitimate business, and if you don't like it, don't do it.
No different than a liquor store, I feel like. Go ahead.
Yeah, not necessarily an advocate for this, but I'm definitely an advocate for having the people have a vote.
Right. I think the last one, was it voted on in 2017, 16?
Yeah, it was right before it legalized the common vote.
Right.
Yeah, correct.
Did you have any thoughts, John?
No, I said, my most concern of it would be revenue, and that's what it was in the first place, but I was against it because of what I see saturation and combining of pot shops throughout the South Shore, but it's a way to garner revenue for the help of the town. Go for it.
And I think my hope would be that if someplace did open in Pembroke, all those people going to Marshville and Halifax might come here, come back to our town. Rich, did you have any comments?
Will we be the grantors of the license?
Yes, the negotiations with Bill, right?
So they would negotiate with you. The permitting process would be they would commit with an application or just a letter of intent?
Letter of intent and an application.
And we don't necessarily have to approve certain individuals, we would have the right to refuse.
Mm-hmm.
Can we negotiate?
Correct.
Special permit granting authority.
Correct.
So the planning, we'll go to the planning board for parking, entrances.
Yep.
Drainage, okay.
But the way a liquor license would come to you is the local licensing authority.
It's a exact. It's a exact same.
The Cannabis Control Commission has to negotiate with the town manager, which will then play into what are the rates going to be? What does that look like? And once the Cannabis Control Commission and the town reach an agreement with the prospective vendor or owner, then they go to the planning board.
They wouldn't waste their engineering costs before they get approved yet.
Right. I have a question. How many of the immediately surrounding towns in Pembroke have it prohibited still?
Good question.
I don't know that answer. I can find out for you.
It's not critical.
I don't know if there's a, I mean, there are stores in most of our neighbors. I don't know about Plymouth. So I have to find out.
Sounds like the majority of them do not.
Yeah, Ducksbury and Kingston, I don't know either, but I think they do.
Kingston has.
They have them.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have them. One of the reasons you're seeing so many strike-throughs in the amendment to the existing planning board article is we went so early that the CMR references are no longer relevant. Like now, there is a Cannabis Control Commission, to Bill's point. Now there's a whole separate general law that applies. So you're seeing the town council go in and say, these references and citations are all wrong. So a lot of this is being fixed, and then dispensaries turning into approved or permitted retail business. And you see that throughout it. So you'll see a lot of duplicated efforts to change bad citations.
A lot of housecleaning, too.
A lot of housecleaning.
If there's no further discussion, do we have a motion?
I would make a motion to vote favorable on Article to be determined, vote to amend zoning bylaw, medical marijuana overlay district, amend general bylaw, Article 20, Section 14 B.C., and accept general law, Chapter 64 and subsection 3, to impose an excise tax on retail sales of marijuana.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, the next one, right behind that one, is to clean up the general law that we have regarding same under police regulations, Article 20, Section 14A, where we specify that no one shall smoke marijuana on town property, the same way we have a bylaw, you know, Section 14, that states you will not drink alcohol on town property. But in this case, we're updating smoke to be vaporized and ingested, and the reference from the CMR to Chapter 94C of Section 1. That's it. It's an amendment, just to clarify. There's no content change, it's...
I have no questions. Does anybody else have anything? Do I have a motion, then?
I'll move to vote favorable action on Article to be determined, amend general bylaws, Article 20, police regulations, Section 14A.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Your next one is to strike in its entirety Article 20, Section 14B, which was that possession of marijuana in Pembroke was illegal. Was not.
It's not conflicted state law.
Trump by state law.
Correct. It's simply a matter of it just needs to be cleaned up. And once B is stricken, 14C will become 14B, which you'll see next. It's just a matter of getting rid of something that no longer applies.
Perfect. Do I have a motion?
Motion to strike Section 14B. Second.
You need to do favorable action.
It's okay.
Yep. The motion is for favorable action.
Favorable action.
Somebody want a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you. And then this last one is, Rich, do you want to do this? This is the bylaw review committee.
Sure, this is just special permission from this board to allow alcohol licensing on town property, which was previously obviously not allowed.
Bill, did you want to explain that thought?
Yeah, so the community center, obviously, is going to, people are looking at it for major anniversary parties, weddings, et cetera, but they want a liquor license. So what this does is allows a vote of this board for a one-day liquor license. It basically grants a waiver or a variance of that policy. We still will, the policy is still effectively in effect in that we won't allow without a waiver from you folks, and it's basically for the community center.
What is the cost of one year liquor license rate?
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
Get that again.
It's what everybody charges. I'm not sure if it's statutory or not, but we're looking at it.
Yeah, we can look at the statute. It's more than likely it's that, it's, every community charges exact same amount, so it's probably...
Maybe we should check.
If we can, we may not be able to.
Well, if we can't, I'd like to...
There. There. I'll show you a note.
Is there any other discussion?
Would you mind if I threw one thing in there?
No, please do.
Because of the way you, ladies and gentlemen, vote to approve liquor licenses, we would respectfully ask the chief, Bill, and Lance to get together and actually define the space that you would be permitting for a one-day, so it was not an open free-for-all, you know, in the stands at the basketball games. So this would be very, just the same way we have a couple of other properties that are not town-owned properties vetted and already defined for one-day liquor licenses. And that way, you guys would know when you voted what exactly you were getting into.
That makes sense, thank you. Is there a motion?
I would make a motion to favorably recommend Article 20.
I don't think it's 20.
It's still to be determined.
There's no number.
So I'll start Article XX.
Oh, yes, Article 20 in the bylaw. So yes, absolutely, to amend Article...
Okay, so there's no article number yet for the town warrant, but...
This is Article 20.
Correct.
It's amending.
It's amending Article 20, Section 14. Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Are all of them correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect, thank you, Sabrina.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Town managers' FY '26 budget review.
So, tonight, we've already introduced most of the players. There are some other budgets that I will be talking about, and those are, we're going to talk about the town accountant. Unfortunately, Michael had a conflict this evening, is not available to be here. We're going to talk about the assessors, treasurer, collector, town clerk elections, registration, public works, and the snow and ice budget, inspectional services, which I am the department head of, townwide utilities, which I am the department head of, and obviously the town manager and select board. So getting right into it, there's currently no changes to the overall. As I have stated at previous meetings, there will be as we go through this process. We've identified a couple that, already, that will be changing, and as we get closer and closer to the end of April, we will identify those for you and make those appropriate changes. So getting right into it, I'm going to do very quickly the town accountant's budget. I want to open by saying there are no budgets before you this evening, and probably very few budgets before you in the entire process, where the recommendation, the recommendation does not equal the request. We have had, obviously, because of limited available revenue, we've had to make cuts to it to just about every single budget. So cuts here, we're mostly in salary levels, although the salaries are increasing, not increasing at the level that was requested. So department head salary via contract, we are currently negotiating, but are getting very close to being completed with that. Assistant department head salary, same thing. Longevity is for time and service based on the wage and personnel, and then obviously vacation buyback, which we have started to fund, because we didn't, we knew it was going to happen in many departments, so we don't want to leave it as an unfunded area in our budget. So on the expenses, office supplies, dues, travel and meetings, education and computer maintenance. Computer maintenance is basically for the software for our municipal licensing costs. We're looking at potentially moving there, but we haven't made that decision yet, and the costs are going to be similar.
Are you talking about our ERP system?
Mm-hmm.
So we're going to move to a different ERP system?
We haven't made that decision. But we're looking, municipal has become very costly, and there's some folks that don't like it because of the cumbersome issue. I haven't, I'm not pulling the trigger on it, I'm just advising the board that we are looking...
Yeah, transitions can be messy sometimes.
We know. We know.
Yeah.
So, and there's a lot of players there. So, you know, that decision is, has not been made. Any questions on the town accountant budget? Okay? And if you have questions for department heads, they are here to support this. I said I would introduce and talk through the budgets, but if you have operational questions or budget questions for them, please feel free to ask. So, next one up is assessors' budget. As I said, we have Jean Jalali here, who is our chief assessor. Like everything else, this budget does have some cuts. It has some overtime cuts, some cuts in other areas that she had asked for. I want to commend everyone who's here tonight, because we've talked through the cuts, and the answer I got from everybody is, we're going to, we're going to do our very, very best to make it work. So I appreciate that. As I indicated before, they are consummate professionals who do much more than just their specific duties within their departments. Every single one of these person, people that are here tonight, are just unbelievable in their commitment to this community. So, I mean, that is awesome. So chief assessor, that is via contract, clerical salaries, is a collective bargaining agreement. Temporary employees are employees we can bring in to, to help with, you know, specific tasks there. Obviously, we do have an overtime budget. That budget is less than what was requested. It does limit our capability to do home inspections or building permanent inspections in the evening. Some people just aren't available during the day, and we have to go out after hours to do that. We're going to make, try to make that work. Longevity is a contractual obligation. Professional improvement is contractual obligation. Performance appraisal is a contractual obligation, and then the buyback, we want to make sure that we cover that. So that's the wages and salary piece. Office supplies, computer supplies, certification expense. Registry deeds, that's for getting the deeds from the registry and information from them. The education, travel, and meetings, that is so that we can attend meetings and, you know, continue, continuing education. This is a rapidly, a rapidly changing field, as many of our municipal fields are, and we want to make sure that we continue that, and that we educate new staff and get staff up to speed. Vehicle maintenance, the assessors just have a vehicle for inspections. Obviously dues is to pay the dues for both the MAAO, which is the Massachusetts Association of Assessing Arts in Plymouth County. Legal expenses are expenses that are, you know, for covering questions in law and covering appeals to the appellate tax board. This is one that I have indicated that I, we will monitor very closely, and I will backstop it if we have to. And then computer maintenance is for our licensing costs. We have a new, an upgraded program with a new company that bought our previous company. So that there, and then obviously engineering, engineering costs is for updating the assessors' maps, which are the legal maps of the community for parcel identification. So, any questions on the assessors' budget?
Yes, certification expense, that cut in half.
Yeah, it's a non-certi... Go ahead, Jean.
Certification is kind of a catch-up. And what was happening the past several years, as you can see, computer maintenance went up. And so essentially, I transferred the money, oh, sorry. Essentially, I transferred most of the money from certification into computer maintenance, because what was happening is all of our computer bills for our vendors, our camera system, all that, it was in the red. So computer maintenance was in the red, and we had an abundance, we had extra money in the certification, so essentially it was a transfer.
Good, that's awesome.
Any other questions on the assessors' budget? All right, moving on. Next up, treasurer collector, and I'm sure if you ask Kathleen, she will tell you that there are cuts, there's a cut in staffing here from the request. She is down a body, actually, she's down two bodies right now, but is it still two?
One.
We just hired one. Yes, okay. This week, a person started, so...
Woo!
Yeah, yay, right? So we're excited about that. So, moving down, we had eliminated their overtime a couple of years ago. Longevity is a contractual obligation. Performance appraisal, professional improvement, same story, their CBA and wage and personnel obligations, and then vacation buyback, as we have discussed in the other budgets. Checks and envelopes, this one is going up, 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 up. We are seeing the cost for that and the cost for mailing. We had a discussion the other day in my office about how much it costs to mail a certified letter these days.
Hundred dollars, about.
It's just unbelievable. It's close to $10 now, right?
Yeah, nine sixty-five.
Yeah, so unbelievable. So office supplies, computer supplies, bonds are for, obviously, for the bonds, for staff, travel and meetings, for training, et cetera. Dues to be members of the associations. Tax title services is important, because that allows us to formally go through the tax title process. Those costs are up, probably, we're going to monitor this very closely. This is a legal cost, which, as with the assessors' budget, we may have to backstop from other areas if it gets to a point where it's necessary. Data processing and payroll, that is for our payroll system and the software related to that, and then obviously our banking costs. Any questions on the treasurer collector budget? No? Okay. Sorry, Kathleen, we tried. So next budget up is, it's actually three budgets, but they all work in the town clerk's office, and as I said, Andy is here doing a remarkable job. I am so happy we have Andy. We hired a new staff member to replace Andy, and the training has gone incredibly well, and just, just remarkable. Thank you. So getting into the budget, first one is the salary for Andy that we negotiated is in our contract. Clerical salaries is part of the collective bargaining agreement. We do have overtime in this budget, because they do stuff after hours, and we don't have a choice, because it's required by law now. So, and then obviously, out-of-grade pay. We only have two staff, two official full-time staff members here, so when Andy is gone, via the collective bargaining agreement, we have to pay out of grade, grade pay, which is completely reasonable. Office supplies, we did, I did, I cut this budget. I will take responsibility for that. We're going to monitor it, as I said. Andy is remarkable, like everybody else, that, you know, will make it work. So printing, another one we're going to watch very, very closely, because you do have to print all those, the census and everything else. Computer supplies, travel and meetings for training and clerk's meetings, dues for the association. Obviously, the clerk is bonded, so we have a bonding cost. All right, that is the town clerk budget. The next part of the budget is the elections budget. It's a set red. Question?
I do have a question. Looks like you get some spam there, Rich. The town clerk position, elected, we had talked a little bit about whether it was going to stay elected, or was going to go to an appointed.
So I will have a presentation for you in the month of August, so I'm not going to jump that a little bit, but Andy and I will be before you to talk about that over the summer, with potential changes at the fall town meeting. That's all. Okay? So elections, that's the budget specifically for elections, temporary employees, those are your election personnel that work the day of election and actually work the days co, leading up to the election with early voting now. So they have that. And then office supplies, computer supplies, data processing, that's for the ballots. The big drop there is because it's not a presidential year. So I'll answer that question before we get it. So police details, police details are up, the costs for police details are up, so I want to make sure that we adequately cover that. And then other expenses are related to the day, the preliminary stuff, everything else that goes on with elections. So that is the elections budget. Any questions there?
Yeah, just, how many temporary employees do we usually have during an election?
It's going to depend on the election. So obviously, presidential election years, like presidential elections, we have, there's a lot of pre-election events, so there's in-person early voting. We, thanks to poll pads, we're down to two people for that. But then there's also, like, advanced depositing, advanced removal. So an election, presidential election year, you're looking at usually 12 part-time temporary employees leading up to election day, and the day of election, we have about 30 election workers on staff. Then that's a, usually a 13, 14-hour day for them, so that adds up a little, pretty quickly. This year, it's a local election. I mean, we are going to have in-person early voting, but we can do that in our office. We don't need to have anybody else. We don't need to do advanced processing for local, we can do that day of. So it's, you know, there's drastically reduces our needs when we just have a local election that one year, that one fiscal year.
I have a question. Andy, how are you guys doing? And I know, obviously, we just came out from a presidential election, so I'm very curious about how you guys handled it with that, too, mail-in ballots. How's your capacity with the mail-in ballots question?
Well, we saw a drop-off from 2020, which was, was expected, but it was, it was a much higher drop-off, I think, if, if every, try to blur out those last few months, but I feel like we had, we had about 4,000 mail-in ballots. So that, that we do get some reimbursement from the state from that. I think going forward, in-person early voting is going to be, people really seem to utilize that more this time around, and I think, and 2020 was obviously such a hard year for us to go off of, because that's not the norm. I think 2024 is going to be more of what we're seeing, future trends. More in-person early voting, I mean, that was even a national trend, less vote by mail, which is better for us. It's, it is better for us. No matter what, we're going to have to have these advanced processing sessions, but if we can not spend as much on postage, because we, as a town, we have to pay for the postage, but the voters don't have to pay for it to return. So that adds up pretty quickly. Like, we do get some funds back, but not, it's not all reimbursed.
And many of those who maybe even put in for mail-in ballots, you pay for the postage, go back, and they maybe don't even send it back.
Exactly. My favorite people, they, they waste it, yeah.
So with what you got, I mean, if that was, I mean, that was obviously a big turnout election, the November election, if, if that was a significant drop, we're probably going to see that trend likely continue.
Yeah.
Your bandwidth for handling that, that volume, you would say, is sufficient? You weren't, you're not too worried about?
No, no, we're not worried about that.
Okay, all right.
In turn, with the more in-person early voting, it's similar work, vote by mail and, like, handling that. that, so I, we still will have those pre-election events, so that's saying they will anticipate, but hopefully we have reduced, like, even costs for like labels. Labels are extraordinarily expensive, and we have the label, the ballots that are going out. So, the less requests we have, the less expenses we have, even in office spots. What is it? Oh, my God, a dollar, no, 98 cents, because I think it still is under, I think it's under one and a half, not two.
The county's classage.
Well, that's covered in the state, that's, so those are, we get, we get the returned postage covered by the state that's in, with the envelopes we receive from them. So, if I remember correctly, it's 98 cents, and that goes up every, every election because postage goes up.
So, if you think about that, it's 5,000 mail-in ballots, it's $5,000 the town has to pay in just postage, not, not printing or administrating or sending or any of that other work, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions on elections? Okay, moving on to registrations. Registrations is for registering the voters, making sure that our voter rolls are active. We have a public service message.
Please return your census. Please return your annual street census.
So, and if you don't return it, what happens?
So, June 1st, and this is state statute, we have to inactivate any voters that have not answered the street listing for this year. So, anybody that's, has not answered 2025, we have to inactivate them. As of when we met, it was 5,555. It's gone down, I think, you know, we, but every day it goes down, because people do respond every day. I think we're down to about 5,300. So, if we, if tomorrow was June 1st, 5,300 people would have to get a postcard from us saying, are you, basically acknowledging that they're inactive and giving them a chance to respond. So, we have to pay for the postcard, pay for the postcard to come back. So, each postcard is 56 cents, so times that by two, it's at $1.12. So, it's $1.12 per person that we have to inactivate. So, if nobody's sure if they don't, if they're not sure if they've answered, they can call us, we can verify the information over the phone, and then they can respond electronically on the town website. They don't need to waste a stamp, they don't need to come and drive down here and give us a census, they can do it, we can do it all, you know, electronically or, you know.
So, even apart from the civic duty question, there's a pocketbook question where they can save themselves and the town some money.
Absolutely, so. Every opportunity we get, we are providing this public service message, please return your census. If you have a question or you can't find it, call the town clerk's office. If you need further information on that, right on the front page of the town's website, pembroke-ma.gov is a note about how to, how to deal with census.
And we're going to keep pushing that until June 1st.
Yeah, so save the town some money, get it back, make sure you're not removed from voter rolls.
Because they don't pay the postage, we do.
Right.
Both ways.
Not a lot of people know that relationship between your census and your voter registering, and that's—
Yes, it's very important.
Unfortunately, we have a seven.
So, I got two questions, actually. So, one, is there anything, is anyone aware of anything in the works to digitize this process at all, or you have to send it in with snail mail, physical paper, or show up in person?
So, I am not aware, MMA has not posted anything, there's no legislative updates to digitize that process at this time. It is one of the things that I will be talking with our legislative delegation, I know I'm meeting with the senator next week, unfounded management states such as this, there's a great deal of them with the town clerk, but there are some others out there that, you know, if, if that's going to happen, make sure that the state pays for them or change those regulations slightly so we can do it digitally. You know, if we collect email address, we can send an email, you know, that would be a huge improvement in the process.
You can, you can spend a million dollars buying a house and sign everything digitally. I think that we can do an annual census digitally.
And there's support from the Mass Town Clerk Association, you know, we, we're actively speaking to our legislators, and there's support from us as well. This, it's, it's kind of like an archaic way to keep current, you know, keep our voter rolls and our resident counts current. It's like, you know, people lose, people don't answer their mail, they, you know, it's just they lose it, whatever, we hear, we hear it all, all, every way you can think of, and it's not, to me, and especially like, I'm a one-year-old, it's like, this is so, this is so outdated. Why are we still using snail mail as a, as a means to keep these very important, you know, data current? It doesn't make any sense anymore.
And Andy mentioned earlier, and she should get all the credit in the world, she created a web form on the website so that she can assist people in attempting this electronic means and—
Right, so people—
Has the deadline going well?
Yeah, we actually, especially this year, where I think we've been pushing it a little harder, we're probably, I'd say, about 20%, 20% of responses are now coming in electronically. So, they go onto the town clerk's page, they go on the top-left corner, I think it's like annual town census form, and they just, they just put any 12-digit code in that they want, it doesn't have to be the household ID code that's on every census, they can, and they can say there's no changes, and we can verify what we have for their resident, for their household rather. So, we can say, okay, these are what we have, this is the date of birth, this is what the occupations are, you know, if there's any minor changes, we can make them over the phone and then we can, they can, electronic is done, that's all the same. If there's a change in a voter, it can get a little difficult, we can't change voters unless there's a signature attached to it, so then I'll say, well, you know, we can, there's other, other methods they can do. Everything can be done online, so we can direct them online.
I love it.
So, trying to push that as much as we can, because that way people don't have to, like I said, they don't have to come down here, they don't have to waste a stamp that are so expensive now, they can do it all, you know, all online. And they gave me email me a picture of their census signed, they can do that, too, and I get that all the time, so.
I love it, that's a—
We're trying to, I am, I always am trying to like figure out ways to get these people to respond.
That's awesome, that's, that's continuous improvement, that's modernization, that's awesome initiative, so thank you so much for that, that's really good for the town. And real quick, one other thing I want to ask, too, like you mentioned, obviously, you know, you can go inactive if you don't do it.
Yeah.
Can you just expand upon what that means for folks when, when they do go inactive?
Yeah, so there's, if you look, if you think of your voter rolls as active and inactive. So, active voters, you come to election, you don't have to sign any documentation or provide any ID that you are a continuous resident of Pembroke. If you're placed on the inactive voter rolls, you are still registered to vote, you just have to, at the elections, you have to provide some form of ID, and that's not necessarily a driver's license, you can provide a utility bill, there's other examples of an ID. You just have to sign a continuous residency form, provide that ID to the warden or clerk of that precinct, and then you're free to vote. So, and that will reactivate you as well as a voter. So, you know, it's not, it's not to penalize voters, but it's just to get them to understand that if we don't know that you are still here, how is, how is the election, how are voter registration rules going to be accurate? They have to continuously tell us that they are still here, so.
It probably helps with representation and things like that, too.
Absolutely, I mean, like, you know, the more accuracy in our data, that helps with our populations. Right now, we're at, I checked the other day, it was, we're actually under 18,000. So, I think that's because we're seeing more people participate and respond to their census, and that's giving us more accurate count of, you know, every time there's a sale of a house, we have to, we, you know, I get data from Genie, and then I actually will try to send a census to the new homeowners, so we can get the old homeowners out of there. So, if they have, you know, five adult children that are no longer there, we don't want them on our residency counts, we don't want to, you know, be inaccurate with what we're reporting. So, we're trying to keep it as accurate as possible.
Sabrina's going to bring over a mic. Alene?
What about like putting some information out in library or town meeting where that, with a QR code or something that people can go to that site and be able to submit quickly? Letting people know that might get a lot more people out in the town, and I'm sure the librarians would be happy to, hey, have you done this yet? You know, use the people you have already there.
Yeah, so we, we will likely be doing that, I was thinking about places where we see a lot of people, recreation, recreation folks, the library, community center, you know, just, we're hoping that people hear us and get them in, but—
Everybody here's been deputized to tell at least one person.
So, yeah, any other questions on registrations?
No, thank you, Andy, thank you.
Okay, moving on, next one's Public Works with Joe DiUri. So, this is divided into three pages because their budget is a little bit bigger, they have a lot more staff than others. First one is the director's salary, you can see that that has gone up, that's because Gene used to be paid out of water because he was our licensed water guy, and the Public Works budget, and actually the solid waste budget. Joe is paid strictly out of this budget, we have changed that model with Dan Solomon coming on board. I have deputized Sabrina, Sabrina is doing a lot of our, Sabrina and Angela, I don't want to leave Angela out, they're doing a lot of the work related to solid waste, which I appreciate greatly, that we've remarkably changed that process for the better. It's, it's awesome, but you can see we no longer have the salary for assistant director because we currently don't have one. As part of budget cuts, we've said, you know, we're just going to hold on that position and not fill it at this point, so.
Is that sustainable?
It is for now. Long-term, we'll see. You know, I'm doing everything I can to support Joe, and Joe has a great staff and Joe has incredible knowledge. He's, you know, he's just completely, as I read when I was talking about his bio, you know, completely dedicated to the town, so. We will evaluate that as we go through the year and into next year. Full-time salaries is for, for the staff there, the reason it's down is because we have a lot younger staff, some of the older staff have left, so we're at lower steps in this, in the schedule. Clerical salaries, obviously there's one clerical position there. Overtime is, unfortunately, it's a public works environment, you need to have overtime, and I support this 100%. Longevity is a contractual obligation, upgrades are for when a supervisor is out or a foreman is out, someone has to act in that position. Temporary staff, we have cut, I don't want to do this, I think long-term we will be restoring this, but for now, it's, it's just so tight. Performance appraisal and vacation buyback are similar to the other departments, so that's the salary part of the schedule.
Who would temporary staff be?
So, well, temporary staff, so they, their staff has vacation time, so in the summer months, there's a lot more work in the summer months other than the full plowing in the winter months, but we don't have the equipment, we're not, you don't typically hire temporary staff, you hire contractors to cover the snow piece, but temporary staff are those folks that you put on for, for doing the sidewalk cleaning, for doing some of the mowing services, for doing some of the public works stuff, and to cover for vacations in the summer months.
And we haven't used that in a few years?
We haven't, just because the tightening of budgets, unfortunately. You know, as I said, we're, we're pretty lean, we've had to make do. So, expenses, heating fuel is for the public works facility, vehicle maintenance is obviously for the public works. Vehicles, signs are for, for part of the signs and replacing our signs throughout town. Clothing allowances, contractual, contractual stipends, obviously contractual there. Protective gear is for buying protective gear for the staff. Drug testing is a requirement, it's a federal requirement for CDL drivers. Telephone, obviously you have telephones. Contracted services, that's for contractors, mostly for tree-related events, Joe?
It could be for, for sure.
Oh, street sweeping, too, right? Or no, that comes out of the other budget?
That comes out of the—
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you. Police details, obviously for projects that are ongoing on road, fuel for the thing, oil, similar. Office supplies, speaks for itself. Building maintenance is for the building, for the public works buildings, not other buildings within the town. Generator maintenance is for the generator. Cemetery materials are for, obviously for the cemetery, we do have a cemetery division, and then the tree and parks materials, we have a tree and parks division. And then finally, custodial supplies for their building, copier supplies for their copier, traveling meetings are, you know, for education and for travel to the meetings, such as association-type meetings, and then licenses, we have several different licenses, from hoisting licenses to CDLs, materials, highway materials, road markings or simply that. Hazardous trees, this is the tree contractor that I referred to before that I said was in another line item. If we, we do have a tree crew, but if we can't get to it, and there's various reasons why we can't, mostly because it's in the wires, we do hire a contractor to do that. Traffic signal maintenance, drainage, street sweeping and catch basin cleaning. Now, street sweeping, incredibly, and it's a requirement for our federal permit, so we have to put a lot of salt down, sometimes sand down, and then we have to sweep afterwards to make sure, it's not just that, and you have to clean your catch bases, it's a, it's a requirement, so.
It's been typically $20,000 to $25,000, any reason why the $10,000 increase? Don't we use our equipment for it?
So, no, it's, it's mostly contracted, we don't have a street sweeper, but I am evaluating a proposal from Joe right now that is to purchase a street sweeper, which the early returns on that are that it would save the town a significant amount of money based on the useful life of that equipment. So, we're looking at that right now, Joe has made that proposal and you will likely see it in the near future, so.
We shared one with Duxbury for many years, have you looked into sharing one with Dan over at Duxbury?
So, we talked about it briefly, but I haven't had that discussion with Joe, and most of those folks aren't in a position to be able to do that right now.
Yeah, that's a double-edged sword, too, because, you know, you're only splitting 50% of the implementation of a vehicle, but it's also getting double the use and double the mileage on it, so.
Yeah, so.
Did you look into a used one or?
Street sweepers are something, I would not look at a used street sweeper, they, they really get some pretty hard use. Mostly used street sweepers are turn-ins from contractors who, they're out there every single day, which is the advantage to buying one ourselves, it's out there a significant amount of time during the spring and summer months, but obviously not in the winter months where they do street sweeping, you know, partnering lots of other things that contractors do, so a lot of those turn-ins don't come from towns, and they have pretty high mileage and a whole lot of hours on them, so they're pretty well-worn.
Do we have indoor storage?
We do. So, indoor storage?
Indoor storage, limited.
So, we're working that, too, overtime, so. Any questions on the Public Works budget? Okay, I'm going to move on to snow and ice. As I indicated before, we're not going to, even though we exceed it, we, we're not going to increase the budget. As of today, we're up to 367, 835, with a budget of 185,000, which is approximately a, well, over 180,000 that we're going to have to fill in the gap at fall time meetings, so I just want everybody to be aware of that. Doesn't make sense to change your snow and ice budget unless you have significant— I am, I am—
That's the third time.
Third time, yeah, thank you.
We're going to have a remote replacement budget?
Yeah, we're going to need one, right?
Make one.
So, yeah, so I'm, I'm not in a position to recommend a change, most of the towns don't. It is the one area you can deficit spend, and if you make a change and you increase it, and you ever want to decrease, you can't legally, if you ever do that, you'll not be able to deficit spend in that account under the statute, so I'm not recommending we change this. I do want to make sure that we plan and have a plan of action for covering that deficit on an annual basis, however. Any questions on snow and ice?
Yeah, what would be the maximum to tell people of where you would go with the snow and ice budget, just for the town side alone? I'm sorry, because we do deficit spend, what maximum would you go with? Because we could actually go above that and pay for it in the fall time meeting.
Right, so whatever it is, I mean, I, I would be uncomfortable if it gets in that $750,000 range, because then you're really eating into your ability to fund it. We're not there, we won't get there, we're already in March, you know, and most of this cost is contractors and salt. What's the matter?
Well, I know that basically, like, we've averaged throughout the years, especially early on, before you got here, it was averaging probably about $400,000.
Yeah.
And I would think, what, you say about two, two and a quarter and say we're done, that's where we're maxing out at? Because we're in a—
Oh, you mean if we were to change the budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would never, I mean, if you look at the actuals for, well, it's off the chart, a few years ago, we didn't, we didn't actually get there, so it was kind of scary. So, I would not recommend going above $200,000.
Yeah, and the anomaly was two, 2015, where we were over a million.
Right, yeah.
And the graph town was—
Yeah, so you're going to see that, and you may see that, if you start to see those trends where the storms are coming in every three days, then you need to make sure that you plan for it, and that you potentially cut in other areas and make sure you have the free cash to cover that cost, so. Any questions on snow and ice? Okay, now we're up to DMI. With your indulgence, I would like to offer them, they don't have to, but offer the staff an opportunity to leave. They're done, if you have no more questions for them, they're here much earlier than I am in the morning, so I would like to give them the opportunity to bolt, if that's okay with you folks.
Of course, please.
Thank you, guys, awesome job, Es.
Thank you.
So, the next budget up is Department of Municipal Inspections. I am the department head for the Department of Municipal Inspections. I want to talk about a change we made. We used to do all of our inspections with part-time staff, and that became a challenge as we grew and we got more and more inspections, and we have a bunch of inspections as we have growth coming on, on target. I will give you a quick update while I'm doing this budget. We have met twice in the last two weeks with the folks for the golf course and for the funeral home projects, they are a multiple permit. So that is good news for the town, in the sense that, that growth will start to come in, not this year, they're not gonna make it, but for future years. For FY twenty-seven, we will certainly see growth from both of those projects, so I'm really excited about that opportunity. Having said that, we've changed our operations in the Department of Municipal Inspections a little bit. We've gone with one full-time building inspector, and then all of our other building inspectors are part-time staff. But as a result of that, you will see that the building inspector lineup did go up. We did cut other inspectors, but they were part-time only, so we're paying a building inspector a full-time salary, which is pretty competitive around there. In this case, it's ninety-five thousand dollars, but money well worth it. The professionalism we're getting, the ability for people to come talk to him, the ability for him to go out and inspect the buildings, inspect zoning violations, et cetera, is very valuable to the community, so I support that a hundred percent. Having said that, there are no other significant changes here in the structure. This does cover all of the staff with administrative inspection, so it covers your board of health staff, your health agent, and your administrative staff. It covers your planning board and zoning board administrative staff, conservation administrative staff, all of your building inspectors, and your building department administrative staff, so. Software maintenance is for the online building permit software. That has become an invaluable tool to us, in that it creates a database for us, we're not managing everything on paper. The inspectors can actually take a tablet in the field to do inspections and review that. When it comes back, it automatically goes in the system, so no one, someone's not keying that in. Huge advantage, it's gonna allow me to change the administrative section, which I'm in the process of doing, so that we have, I don't know, if you've probably heard me talk about my one-two-three, and if you haven't, I will tell you what that means. You need a primary person for every task in your community, you need a secondary person as a backup, and you need a third person in case wanting to decide they wanna get married and move to Bermuda. So, in doing that, I'm taking all of the staff assigned to this, and we are cross-strengthening everybody, and we are balancing those salaries as a result of that. The software is allowing us to be able to do that, so that, that is something we'll be working on over the next year, and it creates greater professionalism in that you have multiple people, so if someone's on vacation, you don't tell someone, "Come back in a week when they're back."
And you have more opportunities for succession in different departments and areas and so on and so forth as well, so.
Yeah.
I think that's great.
So, software is for that, office supplies, obviously there. Waits and measures, he's also part of this budget, he has a part-time salary that's related to that. Traveling meetings is for the building inspectors to go to the annual conference and get a drainage. Mileage, these folks don't have town cars, they use their own cars, so we have a mileage allowance, and obviously the dues piece we're covering elsewhere in the budget, so we've done away with that over the, over the last few years, so. Any questions on DMI? Okay, moving on, townwide electricity. This is a little bit of a frustration with me, because I thought we were gonna have some electricity savings, unfortunately, we're not. The national grid has increased, the delivery charges, our solar is performing incredibly well, and I'm very pleased by that. However, it's just not working out because the solar is the supply-side coverage, so it's a little bit of, budget's going up, bottom line. And then the consultant piece is to pay for our consultants to advise us on, on the electrical pricing and how to work with our aggregation.
So the solar, is that stuffed into this number somehow?
Yeah, so, so the way-
Can you tease that out?
So the way it works is-
Look at that, number four, and you gotta reassemble it.
Oh, my.
I give up.
Give it to Sabrina. Watch your head.
So the solar is part of this, we pay the solar company a discounted rate for providing electricity to the town, and that does reduce the supply side. I mean, many of our budgets on the, on the building, individual building bills are down to zero. The challenge becomes is you still have the delivery charges that you get, because the solar goes into the grid, and then comes into our building, so.
I guess my question is-
It is, it is a savings, but the other piece is eating up part of that savings.
Is the amount that we're getting from the solar, is it increasing? Is it flat?
So typically, because the solar arrays decline in efficiency over the years, that number goes down. It's pretty, it's been pretty stable for a bit, but it will decline over the twenty-year use of life of the product.
At what point do we consider starting to replace the panels?
Well, so we don't-
I know the technology is-
So we don't own them, we don't own them, we lease the land, or, you know.
Okay, what, let me reframe. At what point does the owner start to do that, because of this relationship?
If you see it at the twenty-year point, two things will trigger that. We have a minimum required production level in our contracts, they have to produce enough electricity, and if they don't, they buy us out of that portion, so they give us money. If they see that that hasn't happened, we had a year, a couple of years ago, it's during my tenure, so it's since two thousand twenty, where they actually had to pay us a small amount, a couple thousand dollars, because they didn't produce enough electricity. You get a bad year like that, where you get a lot of cloud cover in the summer months, a lot of rain in the summer months, you're not gonna get the production, but they have to pay us if they don't produce-
Or if the solar panels start to degrade to the point where then they, it's a dog package into the arrangement.
The same thing will trigger that payment, they will replace those panels if those panels degrade enough, so that they're not meeting those requirements, so.
So the leases that we signed with them have a bond in them to make sure that they remove the solar panels at the end of their life, so that they don't just pack up and move to Florida and leave us with, you know, the materials inside there are toxic.
Yeah, right.
So, we have provisions to protect the town if, if they wanna up and leave.
So either that will happen, or they'll replace them and remove the old product, and we'll sign another lease, a new, you know, production agreement, so.
How do you found the electricity at the nearly set up?
Well, it's, it's offset by solar, so it isn't that bad, the actual bills over there are pretty small.
And you expect that to pay for itself?
Electricity, no, not a hundred percent.
With our fees over there, no?
Oh, well, so the fees are covering the costs, yes, if that's the question, but the solar isn't a hundred percent, but we're doing okay.
Future meeting, we can talk about those costs over there, because we're almost a year, a couple of months, and we can-
Yeah, I would say let's get through the fiscal year, so we have a full fiscal year under us, and we can then look at that and talk about that. But as of today, I'm pretty pleased with where we're at. I mean, and the liquor license will obviously help us in the summer months, when the building isn't as busy bringing in events, so, you know, fully support that concept. Any other questions on townwide electricity? So the last budget is select board and town manager. Salary increases, we've negotiated salaries, I have tentative agreements, we haven't inked them yet, but we will be soon, with town manager and executive assistant. We have cut substantially the number of hours in our budget for a third person in the office, that was one of our major cuts. In this budget, I'm going to be replacing that with interns, I'm using, gonna be using a high school intern, hopefully if we can get someone that wants to do our planned program, we're working that aggressively right now. In fact, we had a meeting the other day regarding that, and then this summer I'll be working with interns for Mass Maritime, which come at a very cheap number compared to a clerical person, and they can do a lot of specific tasks. I will share with you my Mass Maritime, they offer a facilities program, we're looking for a facilities intern that will come in and do something that we just haven't had the time to do, that I have put as one of my personal goals, and that is to do a build-out of our building facilities, so that we have the complete inventory of every single aspect of our buildings, from our heating plant to our hot water, to our bathroom facilities, HVAC facilities, whether you have a tower or individual HVAC, or whether you have a rooftop unit, which some of our buildings do. Age of those, brand, model number, serial number, calculating useful life, so we can build out not just a five-year capital plan, but a twenty-year capital plan, which will allow us to further advance that program. It's something I've done in other communities, I just unfortunately haven't had the time and bandwidth to get it done here. However, using an intern that's in the field, we've had very good luck with interns from Mass Maritime, we've used them in police and fire for specific exercise and types of tasks, and they have been incredibly, incredibly responsive, so we're planning to do that this summer, I'm working with Mass Maritime to make that happen. So that's how we're gonna use that as a limited budget, and try to advance it as far as we can make it go, so.
Is the first intern from the pathways program that you were talking about?
So that's, that's, yes, that is exactly, they have very few applicants over there, as she told us the other day, but she's gonna, we're working with her aggressively to try to make that happen. And we have specific programming and tasks for that too, we're gonna do some mentoring and, and I don't wanna take a lot of time to explain it, but basically similar tasks with our IT infrastructure, so.
Nice, thank you.
So moving on down, dues is for dues for you folks, and in the department advertising, obviously we do a lot of advertising, however, we haven't had a huge, so I actually cut that, that's one of the cuts that we did make. Traveling meetings, that's for you folks, it's up and down on whether you attend or don't attend. Printing, that's for printing requirements, which we really have to do, town report, et cetera. Eyewear replacements are contractual. And then the pawn treatment budget, that's the next piece that I obviously say Kathleen manages, but it's in our line item. Certain consulting around the town, OPEB study is a year that we have to do the OPEB study, it's due this year, so we need the nine thousand dollars to do that. We negotiated a price with the auditor, so that budget is down, and then-
Could you, should we for the audit?
Yeah.
Since we're in budget season, could you digitally send us the previous year's audit?
Sure.
Thanks.
Yeah, if you wait a few, wait three weeks, we'll have everything done with this year's audit, I can send that if you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, just to share with the board, because, you know, some might read it, some might not.
Yep, yeah, absolutely. Happy to do that. Salary, town manager salary, travel stipend, obviously contractual vacation buyback there, and then dues is for dues for the town manager, I double, excuse me, I C M A and M A A, no, M M A, yeah, M M M A, right, I'll get it. And then traveling meetings is for, you know, attending all of those above meetings for the associations, so. Any questions on select board or town manager budgets? Okay, that's it for this evening, so if you have questions or comments, I'm happy to answer them. If not, I will see you in two weeks.
You were renegotiating the liability insurance.
We are, we're still working through that, we're getting very, very close, I'm likely to be moving away from our current vendor.
Were you considering a lot of savings, or maybe more coverage, better coverage?
It's, it's, so, it's better representation, it's more of a partnership, likely some savings, however, even if we don't get the savings, if we get the other pieces where we get better coverage and our risk is, is limited, so. Haven't pulled the trigger on that yet, I'm giving them an opportunity to see what they can do, but I haven't seen it yet.
Great.
And for our pawn treatments, we usually get help from the legislature, are we going to be asking for money from the legislature for?
So, we are certainly asking, those numbers have gone down in recent years, we will be asking for as much help as we can get. Built into that, I don't know what will happen with that, so certainly we'll use Pembroke Watershed, we will also be talking with the folks in Hanson, which we share a link with, to, you know, they have similar legislative folks as to we do, but if they contact them too, it just, it just emphasizes the point.
Well, do we know what they're gonna allocate this year, are they gonna be down on the pawn?
We don't know, that's, that's a special line item within the budget. It doesn't look good, because state revenues are down, and she-
What for, for Hanson?
Oh, it's usually-
Don't we share that?
It's usually on the one pawn, yes, it's usually split. So, I will be talking to Lisa and their conservation commission over there to make sure, Lisa Green is the, the town manager, to make sure that we're, everybody's on board, so.
Do we have any community comment from the board?
I have a couple things.
Sure.
We had talked, or it was brought up before, that an idea of lending out some lawns for businesses to mow and put it up aside, which would save us money in time for DPW. I don't remember how it was brought up, but-
Matt Burling.
I'm sorry?
Matt Burling, it goes back a bit.
Okay.
We have, we went through the time and effort at that point to do an approved DPW commissioner's MOA kind of agreement, so that private companies could consider some of the properties along Route Fifty-three, Fifty-three, not on the pit.
Of town-owned land?
Yeah.
And maybe town hall?
And then we're just gonna gain traction with the labor, so maybe-
Is this something the board is interested in, pursuing? Could the chairman be interested in partnering up with us and maybe find a landscaper who would like to mow one of our lawns and little of a sign out front in the summer months?
Ask him, it'd be great, I mean, I'll ask Peter, it's fun.
So, there's a couple of challenges there, there's a liability challenge with insurance, and there's a challenge with our sign by law.
Well, it's funny, they, we vetted back then the twelve-by-twelve, which is in the historic bylaw, because a lot of these properties would be along that stretch, the Bethel Chapel, the firehouse that maybe is no longer even a factor, but some of that property along Fifty-three.
And certainly if you do this area here, it's all within the historic district.
They could still put a sign on, it just has to meet the-
The white-
And you need their approval.
I think we can get it from historical, there's been some changes over there.
I was gonna say, they signed off on this memorandum, so it's already been agreed to, it just would need to conform, and if it doesn't, then it would be a problem.
And proof of liability insurance.
And it was also discussed that that stretch-
It doesn't-
-is very popular, but someone might want it just to be able to have that representation.
Right, and if something happens, it doesn't prevent someone from suing, so you just need to make sure that we have insurance coverage, because a lawyer's gonna name us and the company, so.
My second thing is, I was a little disappointed with the Pembroke Teacher Association having a political rally on school property and inviting the public before school starts. Now, this, this became a big issue, because a lot of parents were concerned about what this looked like, what were the reasons for it, and a lot of people pulled their kids from school that day, and the chief had to scramble and put an officer under every school. I wish they'd use better judgment when conducting political rallies on school property, and how this affects the taxpayers, and that's my comment on that.
Does anybody else have a community comment? Come on, Alene.
Well, since you brought up Alene Flashman's school street, by the way, since you brought up the rally, there was a lot of parents concerned about that there was members without kids in the school, they are taking pictures at North Pembroke Elementary, so-
Well, they invited the public.
I'm just pointing out that you were talking about concerns, I'm pointing out there are other concerns on-
Exactly, it's your concern.
Hold on, if I may finish.
I know, I know where you're going, so.
Well, let him finish.
What am I going?
You're going with a certain individual.
I don't care about the individual right now, I'm pointing out simply, you were speaking about, only parents were concerned about one thing, I said there were concerns about their parents too, that's it, I'm not going anywhere.
So if they didn't have a political rally, they wouldn't have any concerns?
Well, it was a, it was not a rally per se, but that being said, I'm-
What, demonstration?
It was a show of support. I mean, I'm not part of the PTA, so I'm not here to speak for them.
We're here defending them.
No, I'm not defending them, you are very defensive right now. All I am simply saying is that you can't only speak up one concern of one side, you wanna speak up the concerns of all the constituents, that is all I was speaking for, thank you.
Thank you, anything else?
I have a question.
Please.
Going back a second about the signs, the bylaw regarding the signs, what signs you can use in the center historic district, et cetera. Has that been, would you say that that's been unnecessarily constraining for the town and for residents, overly or unnecessarily, or should we look at that bylaw?
So, the sign by law is the sign by law, I wouldn't say that the sign by law has been overly constraining, I would say that approvals from the historic district commission, which Rich had pointed out, that there are new members there, and I obviously got the approval out here, and we're about ready to-
Oh, one is back on in, actually.
Yeah, as soon as their ground thaws, that new sign is absolutely gorgeous.
It's built?
It's carved, so I'm incredibly happy about that. It is a carved sign, except for the seal, because the cost to carve that seal, because we don't have, which I'm gonna be looking at, a formally digitized seal, I mean, it's, it's a JPG or an IMG or whatever, that we have graded in, we just don't have a fully rasterized seal, so it's, so it's challenging for them to, to image it and then carve it, so the, the seal on the sign is painted, so, but it's, it's gorgeous, so.
Is that, will that paint hold up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they showed me several commercial signs that were done five, ten years ago that are just still doing really well. In fact, one of them is in Nank, I was surprised to, because I didn't know they had done it.
We can't, we can't have someone, it's not worth it to have the seal rasterized?
We're, we're looking, we're looking at that, yeah.
So in that way, the sign that goes out can be actually inset, so they just paint it on?
Yeah, it's done at this point, so, but-
All right, so it sounds like to the extent-
And the cost to do it, whether, I mean, that was just one roadblock in there, I mean, the cost to do it was still pretty high, to do that carving.
Okay, so it sounds like to any extent, maybe the sign by law had been considered overly constraining, that may be a bit of a moot point now.
Yeah, I think it's individually-
Within reason.
Driven, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's all.
Anything else? All right, upcoming issues, on April ninth at seven-thirty, we'll have a public hearing for the roadway acceptance article for Bristol Road. April twenty-third, all warrants are signed for posting on April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five, and on May thirteenth at seven PM is annual town meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.